So this hearing doesn't...
Okay.
But it's all good. We're just gonna have two.
I know, but they want to.
And we don't be sure that we can find these.
They're down two.
All right, I like that.
I convinced Will.
I kind of hope not have the...
It's a small office.
Right.
Was meeting the last.
Like what it was gonna go on.
We talked, we actually thought, yes, we talked to me this...
See, we're regional.
No, but I see I did miss a call from both GCHR.
We're doing that.
I guess we're talking to some...
Yeah.
We can put in...
Oh.
We'll plug everyone.
So we want...
There's a bunch of...
Yeah.
So I'm perfect in line with what I'm calling.
We don't care. Put it in a wall. We'll put in a door later. So we'll just take care of it.
And, you know, I'm pretty...
Yeah.
Well, we don't have so...
Oh, okay, thanks.
Everybody can each other in your hearts. Oh.
Oh, I think you went to the bathroom.
No, he's right.
On the dais. On the dance floor.
Yeah.
Yes. We're wanted. Okay, all set. Oh, Counselor Bagley's gotta get mic'd up. All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, October 28th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Roll call, all councilors, except Counselor Morrell are present for invocation and inspirational thought this evening. Counselor Smith, would you like to read that for us?
No problem. Please join me in being the attitude of prayer, folks. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment in making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started with public forum, is there anybody who has a declaration of conflict of interest this evening? Okay. Item number five on the agenda is our public forum. Danielle, did you have anyone write in for public forum this week?
I don't know.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Egelstein, 34 Quillich, here in Caribou. A couple of things. Number one, I'd like to know what the status is on a code enforcement officer. That's number one. Where do we stand on that?
We are still accepting applications for that.
Okay, that has not been closed yet for...
No.
Okay. What kind of timeline are you looking at?
Soon as we find an applicant who we can interview and can hire for the job.
But do you have some potential, like by the end of the year, or...
Like I said, as soon as we find a suitable applicant who applies for the position and interviews.
Okay. Number two, you know, we got a lot of things going on here in the city. You know, the police station, we just had a fire here in town. There's just a lot of stuff going on. And then I read in the agenda that you're going to approve the minutes from two February council meetings. And here it is almost the first of November. I really think with a number of things that are going on, so we can get things moving and more expedient and get decisions made and move forward, is I honestly think you really need to take a hard look, or maybe having more than one city council meeting a month. There's a lot going on, and we need to get some things resolved and taken care of, and things just seem to drag out and drag out. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. So on to those minutes from February 12th and February 26th. Does everyone have a chance to review those?
I do have a correction or clarification, at least on page five. We're talking about the, to approve the schematic design and design development documents. Well, actually, that was an error because the design development documents were not presented, only schematic design. So I'd like to see that stricken, design development documents. And secondly, you all may recall that this package came in without any cost estimate, and we had a discussion about that, and we all agreed to make that approval contingent upon the cost estimate coming in under budget, which it did not. It was like $16 million, right? So I don't know, I don't know if we put an edit in there for that or not, but I thought it was important enough to bring it up tonight so that we can, I guess, agree again that that approval was contingent upon the cost estimate coming in under budget. That's all I had on that.
So do we want to wait on those and re-watch the meeting?
I guess we'll have to have clarification on that point.
Do you know, Danielle? I mean, I'd have to watch it again.
I reviewed the video. The motion was correct. The motion as stated in the minutes was correct.
And I cannot amend it.
Right. But there was a conversation that talked about it being, that approval being contingent. So I just wanted to make a note of that, maybe put an asterisk or something in the minutes.
Okay, so I can add another piece, but I can't change the...
No, I'm not asking you to.
If that's how it was.
Because I didn't want to come with that suggestion changed without looking at that video, and the motion was correct, and it was voted correctly, but it was during the discussion, it was all agreed that this approval is contingent upon the cost estimate coming in.
Okay. So one thing, I'm not, like, going back and forth too much, but minutes here are action minutes, so a lot of discussion is not...
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
All right. So do we want to bring back that set of minutes for another vote, or, once we look at that, or are we good to have it just amended by Danielle?
That's fine.
Okay. So if somebody would like to make a motion?
Should we accept the February 12th, 2024 minutes as amended?
Second. Okay, voted and seconded, more discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So now let's just quickly take a look at the February 26th minutes, since we're gonna do them separately now. Does anybody have any comments on February 26th?
I moved to approve the February 26th, 2024 council meeting minutes.
Second. Moved and seconded, further discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Item number seven, under bid openings, awards, and appointments, is the facade improvement grant committee recommendations. Those are on page 11 of your packets. In the 2024 approved municipal budget, $40,000 was approved to continue the facade improvement grant in the downtown Tiff District, and after consultation with BCD, expand the program to include a facade improvement grant in the RC-2 Tiff District. The downtown Tiff District spring grant period granted $3,500 in awards, leaving a total of $36,500 available. For the spring 2024 RC-2 facade improvement grant period, the city of Caribou received three worthy applications from businesses in our RC-2 tax increment financing district. The amount awarded was $22,500. There was $14,000 available for the fall facade improvement grant application period. There were two worthy applications received from the fall application period. A selection committee was convened, and the unanimous decision was made to recommend that the Caribou City Council award the amounts below to the applicants, and those were 58 and Main at 81 Sweden Street, $7,000 for a major exterior remodel, and also for Big Cheese Pizza at 556 Main Street, also $7,000 for a major exterior remodel. What are the wishes of the council?
We do have Big Cheese Pizza here, and I just want to say, I was so excited to talk to them in, when they came to speak about their project, and it looks amazing, and thank you so much for your investment.
We couldn't be here without the community, so it's time we did our part to spruce them up, and like, we worked for, Gary and Parks and Rec, making the trail, we widened the ATV trail through there and leveled it out so it's safer, and we lit everything up, and it followed us every step of the way, but we beat the ugly off it.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here.
I'll make a motion to accept the results of the facade improvement grant committee and award. The facade improvement grant in the amount of $7,000 to 58 and Main, and $7,000 to Big Cheese Pizza, the projects described in the application, and subject to the terms set forth in the grant application.
Second. Moved and seconded, further discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations.
And again, thanks so much for your, for improving your property and making that investment.
Thank you. Item number seven B is bids on mowing equipment, and we have our Parks and Recreation Director here this evening to share some information with us.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Manager Thompson. As you can see in my bid memo to you guys, we've been a few years on needing a new Z mower. We've held off in the last couple of years on a purchase, but this year, this, our older mower really started costing us a lot of money, so we decided that this year was the year to do it. We waited all year long. We were hoping to get some fall pricing, which we kind of did. As you can see in the bids, we went to two of our local dealers in town, and they were pretty spot on on their bids. $52 between, between the two is pretty, is pretty good. So we were able to sell our old 2015 Zero Turn. It sat on the city's website for the 30 days for surplus equipment. It didn't get any action, so we put it out on Facebook Marketplace, and it sold within 10 minutes. So that money has been recorded into the G1 36510 account, and as you can see in the bids, staff has gone and reviewed both mowers, and we've come back with trying out the big boy, the bad boy out of Lucas's Small Engine Repair out on Van Buren Road, and just wondering what the wishes would, of the council would be for us to be able to purchase a new Zero Turn for the Parks Department for next year. Well, for this year, but we'll use it for next year. We're done mowing. Mother Nature's told us this morning, we're done.
She may have mentioned that.
Yeah.
And the account has more than...
The account's got enough money into it to take care of it, yes. With the sale of the older Zero Turn, we were able to put enough money in that account, so we've got some and a little bit of extra if something happens, so, yeah.
That's great. Nice job. All right. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept Luke's Small Engine Shop quote for $11,350.
Yep, that is correct. $11,350.
Yep, $11,350.
I second it. You have a motion and a second, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Lovewell? Oh, Kelly, sorry.
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Gary, while you're there, do you want to talk about the events you've had, Craft Fair and Trunk or Treat?
Yep.
Since you're already up there.
We had Craft Fair on the 19th and 20th of October, about 120 vendors. Saturday morning, doors don't open till 10:00, but the doors busted open at like 9:30 and 9:45, and it was nonstop all day. Vendors did extremely well. We didn't think, the weather was so nice, we didn't think the traffic was going to be there, but it was. Excellent, excellent, excellent facility this year. I can't say enough about the two janitors that worked at the high school. They did an excellent job all weekend long. Every time I called them to go do something, they, they were around, and it worked out great. Vendors are all happy. I've probably signed up close to 95% of them for next year already. So everybody's happy. The school venue was great. Then last weekend, we did our trunk or treat. Weather was a little iffy, calling for rain on Saturday, but it ended up by turning decent until the wind started howling around 5:30, 5, 6 o'clock. It was a little windy, chilly, but I think we probably ran through about 800 kids down through the parking lot. About 25 to 28 cars showed up, different organizations. So it was a very well-attended event. I told Matt Bouchard, I said, you know, we don't even need to show up anymore. Cars can just park themselves, and we can, we can stay home, and they can, they can take care of it. But we had a couple people that couldn't make it that night. They ended up by donating their candy to us, and it was probably a good thing because some of the, some of the trunks emptied out pretty quick. So a great, great weekend. So you'll be hearing in the next couple weeks, some, some big announcements that we're doing downtown with Caribou, Christmas in Caribou Village. Just watch out for Facebook and radio and TV ads, and I think you're going to be extremely happy with what the committee is coming up with to, to bring more people into Caribou for the Christmas shopping season, and the committee is pretty excited, and it's going to be, it's going to be really fun. It's going to be really fun. Any questions on anything that's been going on?
No, but I will say I did get the chance to attend the Craft Fair, and it was amazing, and I went on Sunday, and a lot of the vendors were almost sold out of their items by the time I got there in the afternoon.
I had one vendor try to sneak out at 2:00, and I said, you gotta go back. We don't close till 4:00. She says, I'm out, I'm out. I said, she left anyways, but yes, everybody was happy, and I've got a couple suggestions for next year, some of the people that came, so I think we're going to implement those, but everything was very well attended, and everybody was, everybody behaved, and I had nobody taking tape and moving tape over so they can get a bigger spot.
So Gary, this was the 50th year.
This was the, yes, this was the 50th year, and I gotta, I gotta, I don't know of anyone other than one vendor crafter that's been going, and for every year, she's been to everyone, except for everyone missed one during COVID, but she has been to all, and that would be Bethany Anderson, that would be Jody's mom. She's been to them all, and she reminds me every year. She's been to the mall. So yes, there's, I've got some long-term vendors that have been coming for 30 years, but 50 years is pretty impressive, so...
Do you have, do you have any sense of how much revenue is generated by that event, by the vendors?
By the, no. I mean, I, some of them, I'm sure, keeping good, close tallies, but I would dare say there's, there's a good amount of money.
Yeah.
There's a good amount of money that they're making. When they come in and set up for an hour and a half on Friday night, and then Sunday, when they leave, they only take like 15 minutes, because they've got nothing left. So everybody did well, but the main point, that one of the takeaways from having the Craft Fair in Caribou, and Carl's event was a big draw as well this year, the event over to the rec center, it's the, it's the revenue that it brings to the town that weekend. You know, the shops are, people are eating at the restaurants, that, you know, they're shopping, and they're spending money in Caribou, and that's what we're trying to do, and it's, and it's an event that city puts on, but it's, it's really not a lot of work, and there's not a lot of overhead, there's not a lot of expense, so it's, it's one of those things that we need to keep it going, for sure, for sure. So it's a, it's a good weekend for, it's a really good weekend for Caribou.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Danielle.
Yeah, you can.
You may be excused.
But honestly, Gary's being a little bit too modest, because this is something he really works on all year. Like, I get emails all through the year with this vendor, that vendor, you know, wanting to know if things are still going, and, you know, is there a spot? And then it seems like even right up until like, the Monday before it starts, you get it, you know, they're putting it in the group chat, oh, I guess I'd like to have a booth. Do you have anybody left? And Gary always tries to like, find a little spot for them, but it's, it is more work Gary is letting on, I guess, is all I'm...
If that bothers you, I can take you off the email chain.
Oh, no, no. I like to know what's going on, you know? I, I, I'm just a nosy Nelly over here, and, but it's, it's a great event, and, and I know people are out in the restaurants and getting gas, and going to our brick and mortar stores too, so it is a great event.
That's good.
It's a really good weekend for us to...
Is it? Okay, see, we have real live feedback from a business owner here. That's great. Yeah.
Item number eight is public hearings and possible action items, and we have three public hearings on the agenda this evening. The first public hearing is the renewal of a registered nonprofit dispensary permit for Safe Alternatives. That starts on page 18 of your packet. Before we open the public hearing, I'll just kind of give a little bit of background. Safe Alternatives is a registered nonprofit dispensary licensed under the state of Maine and located at 1137 Presque Isle Road. City licensing procedures require that a public hearing must be conducted by the city council before a nonprofit dispensary permit can be issued or reissued. City departments have reviewed the requested renewal and have determined that there are no violations of local zoning or land use ordinances. There have been no unreasonable disturbances to businesses or persons residing in the vicinity, and there have been no repeated incidents of record, of breaches of the peace, disorderly conduct, vandalism, or other violations of law caused by business patrons or employees, and that there have been no violations of record pertaining to state law or the Caribou Code related to the business operations. The property was inspected on Friday, October 25th, 2024, by the Chief of Police, Fire Chief, and Acting Code Enforcement Officer, also our city manager. Staff recommends the registered nonprofit dispensary license be renewed based on the following findings and condition. So the findings, city departments have reviewed the requested renewal and have determined that there are no known violations of local zoning or land use ordinances. The second one, there have been no unreasonable disturbances to the businesses or persons residing in the vicinity. Third would be that there have been no repeated incidents of record, of record of breaches of the peace, disorderly conduct, vandalism, or other violations of law caused by business patrons or employees. And the fourth finding was that there have been no violations of record pertaining to state law or the Caribou Code related to the business operations. The condition that was set was, fourth, was that the Safe Alternatives continues to comply with all applicable laws and ordinances, including but not limited to remaining a licensable dispensary under the state of Maine. Tonight, the required public hearing will be conducted. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:20. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak about this? Is there anybody from the council who has any questions for the city manager? Okay, see, no comments. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:21 PM. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to, we... Renew the license for Safe Alternatives as a registered nonprofit dispensary.
Second. I think so. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next public hearing is on ordinance, or ordinance, number eight of the 2024 series Amending General Assistance Guidelines, and that's on page 22. So each year, a new set of general assistance maximums are provided by the Maine Welfare Directors Association and the Maine Municipal Administration, and we have to make adjustments to our maximums as set by the state. We do have the option to place higher amounts for the maximums, but at this time, it is not believed to be necessary to do so. Tonight, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance number eight of the 2024 series, amending Chapter 17 General Assistance. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:22 PM. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this from the public? Does anybody from the council have questions?
I'd just point out that I've asked, always brought this up in the past, this is just brought forth to us by the state. We really don't have a lot of control over this, we're just following suit.
Danielle, do you want to take that one as our GA administrator?
So we can't go lower than what the state sets, but we can go higher.
So that one's...
That's the only thing you need to do. Every year, it changes as of October 1st. So, yeah, it's, it's a vertical.
Yeah, okay, so I just...
So somebody sets the maximums, and we basically adopt that, that standard maximum, right? That's what we've done typically.
Yep.
So where does that money come from? Is that part of our municipal budget?
Yes.
And so they impose those new maximums on us every year, and we have to generate the money to pay it? Okay. I remember last year when I reviewed these, I thought that the, I thought the assistance for housing was really low. Did you happen to notice?
So when somebody comes in for assistance, we also have them apply for other programs, such as Section 8 and other low-income housing programs, to help offset that difference, so it shouldn't, it should be taken care of.
Did you sense that the, the increases in maximums were appropriate for inflation and other things that are going on today?
Rent is not...
Still not?
But with using all the programs available, it is doable.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Also, I would like to say, with regard to general assistance, is the state has changed their protocols for the time which Danielle must be open, which technically, she's open 24 hours a day to assist people with general assistance, and if it's after business hours, people inquire at the police department, and they contact Danielle. But during the day, we have previously set hours where Danielle would work on GA. But Danielle, would you like to talk about how it is now with the state's new set of guidelines?
If the building is open, GA is open for appointments.
Not appointments, really, right?
Yeah, they're really not...
Just drop in, anyone can drop in, and yeah.
A lot of times, you give them paperwork because there's stuff that's required to come to an appointment or to come in and meet with me, so there's always a little bit of homework they have to do first, so, but it is every day of the week now.
Okay. Instead of two days, which we were, we had it for two days, and now it's five days.
Wow.
So that's, you know, an increased state-mandated burden on our city staff to have to accommodate that all the hours we are open.
Have we gotten to a point where we might need to hire another person?
Danielle and I were just having that conversation today, you know, that the way everything is going, like, but we haven't made that, you know, decision to bring to the council or anything yet. It's just, we were having that decision because of it, you know, Danielle's, you know, changing focus from like, right now, elections are a big part of the focus, like, how many ballot, how many absentee ballots have you...
We're over 1,000 for Caribou.
Is there an election coming up?
What? So obviously, okay, what have you learned from this? Dan doesn't watch TV, answer his phone, or get his mail. Just kidding, just kidding, Councilor. Yeah, so you, so how does that compare to other towns, would you say?
Well, when it first started, the first... We were in Lewiston, and I thought that was huge, because they have 35,000 people that live there, so I was happy with that. I'm sure they'd beat me by now, but we are definitely higher than most in this area.
So with absentees, that too, is like a multi-step program, I mean, process. It's not like, you know, at the polls where people can come, they get their ballot, you know, they vote, they put it through the machine. How long would you say it takes? Like, if I come to the counter, how long is it going to take me to get an absentee ballot?
If, when you come to the counter, it's maybe five minutes, and... If, when you come to the counter, it's maybe five minutes and you're back out the door unless you vote here. But the whole process from start to finish for us, we spend that five minutes with you, but then we have to file the paper because the application gets stored in a binder in alphabetical order because we have to pull it back out and, you know, sign it in. It's a whole thing. Every absentee ballot takes at least twenty minutes. And that's not even with opening up and processing on election day. And they unleashed a whole new set of rules on that today, too.
Yeah, just today.
Yes, notice.
Just in time for the election.
They had a training today.
And there's another one later this week?
Yeah. Helpful. And so how long is the, how long is the process of someone, if you have to mail it? If someone requests it and they mail it?
Um, so that's, well, that's really fun because we've been putting them in the mail, and then the post office has been bringing them back to us, and then we have to call the postmaster and they have to deliver them. So we've had a little bit of a struggle with that this year. But it's a lot of the same process, except for we're either taking the request over the phone, we're getting a request in the mail, we're getting the request on the computer, and this is going on until Thursday. So we're still doing this full force, and honestly, we look super, super busy in here because we are. And it's not people coming in to register their cars and pay their taxes right now. It's all election. But it is, it takes about the same amount of time, no matter which way we go.
So just wanted to give you like a little window into what's going on.
That's very helpful.
Since we're talking about G A and this, you know, how the state is changing that.
Makes our public hearing much longer. All right. Any other questions about general assistance?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at six twenty-nine. What are the wishes of the council?
A motion to approve ordinance number eight.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the last public hearing that we have is our draft fiscal year twenty-five application to the EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grant Program, and that's on page twenty-nine of your packet. The City of Caribou acquired the Merlin One LLC parcel on the Arustric River, which is home to the former steam and diesel plants that were previously used to generate power in the region throughout the automatic lean foreclosure process. In two thousand and twenty-two, the city successfully applied for a two thousand and twenty-three U S EPA cleanup grant for the diesel plant and the small buildings at the power plant site. This summer, a U S EPA CirclA action started for an emergency removal action at the steam plant. This cleanup grant would be the next phase at the steam plant. We expect to receive the order of magnitude and approximate cost for the project. Therefore, we will be having another public hearing on October thirty-first at three P M here in the Caribou City Council chambers. The application deadline is November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. One of the best parts of this process has been the collaboration between these governmental agencies and private sector partners. The cost for the remediation of the site will cost millions of dollars and take several years. The City of Caribou is working with the D E P, the EPA, the University of Connecticut, and C V and Mahir Engineers Incorporated to apply for an EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grant. Everyone involved can see how the revitalization of this area can be the catalyst for a riverfront renaissance. So part of this process is to seek public comment, and so that is why we are having a public hearing this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at six thirty-two P M. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak about this? Is there anyone on the council who has some questions?
Just a quick one. So we're going to have, we're having another meeting on the thirty-first?
You don't, no, you don't have to have a council meeting. We're just having, um, we should by that time have the order of magnitude and the cost of remediation. So we actually have to have another public hearing. But that doesn't mean people, like, we're advertising it, and we're going to be here, and I'll be here to answer questions, and we'll have someone from S M E here to answer questions also. It's just, we didn't get this for tonight, but we do have a lot of other information in here about the, um, you know, this different assessment of Brownfields Cleanup Alternatives, which of course, alternative one is to do nothing, and that is probably not the right thing to do. That's been very attractive to Vandals. It's right by the river. We have a good start on the cleanup because of the EPA's CirclA action, and it's... I really can't stress enough how great they have been to work with. And so as part of their after-action, they are actually hiring... We're just, we're just fortunate, and I can't help but feel blessed. So they are hiring a contractor that's going to give us the plan. It's going to give us the plan to how this has to be remediated and deconstructed so that, you know, any residents in the area will be protected from any contamination. They have, so through the CirclA action, they have had air testing going on down there to make sure that nothing is getting in the air. They're doing what they call a rinsing process after to make sure that there's nothing left in there that could become airborne. And in the spring, we'll be getting the full report on, on what needs to be done if we are fortunate enough to get the Brownfields Cleanup Grant. In the meantime, they are, um, we've had the, so EPA has people that work in the CirclA, this emergency response action, and a different group work in Brownfields. So one day last week, we had a Zoom call that kind of brought both of them together, plus the D E P. And the CirclA folks have agreed to communicate with the Brownfields folks with at least an estimate of the order of magnitude and the cost of remediation that would be sufficient enough to go forward with our grant application. And we're supposed to have that by close of business tomorrow. And I'll take any questions that anyone has. Everyone knows I could talk about this all night. My own family sets a timer when I go start on Brownfields.
Does anybody have any questions for Manager Thompson?
I do have a comment. I think, I think Penny's being modest now because these guys are being so great in working with us because she spent years building relationships. And that's what it's all about, and they trust her, they admire her, the work that she's doing for the city, as do we. And this is why we're in this position, so thank you. Thank you, Penny. It's wonderful what's happening with these brains.
I know, I know. And I think everyone knows that.
Yeah, it is. We thank you for it.
I agree with Dan on that one.
It's going to have such a huge impact on how that area looks, on whether it will be amazing.
Transformative.
For sure, for sure.
Penny, can you also just comment to other people that are watching and people that are in the audience or whatever that don't know about how dangerous it is for the Vandals and maybe kids that have been in there who have been exposed and maybe bring those contaminants home on their feet or on their clothing? How that can impact the people around them, their pets, the family members, that kind of thing?
So there is, um, there are many different types of asbestos in the steam plant. Some of them are easier to bring into our community than others. Of course, we have over two miles of asbestos-wrapped pipe just in the steam plant. So like, try to think about that, two miles. And this, um, the asbestos insulation is not just, you know, something like this. It's like this thick. And in the call that I had last week, one of the contractors said they have never seen so much asbestos. They have taken thirty tons of material out. They're on their sixth roll-off container. Yeah, amazing. And what, and so in addition to that, you have other contaminants, like, um, there's some transite, which they, the stuff that was damaged, they're taking. The stuff that's not damaged, they're leaving for this, this next phase. There's, like, there's switches and things in there that have, you know, other kinds of contaminants. But because the CirclA action is an emergency response action, they're only taking anything that's an immediate, you know, threat to the public. So like Counselor Lovewell was saying, that someone, if they broke in, they're walking around with their shoes or... We have a lot of people that walk their dogs, and one of the times I was down there, someone's dog ran in there. And all I could think about was, you know, him, his paws going through there and getting some of the asbestos from the pipes, which all of that is friable. All of it, you know, can be airborne very easily because it's just fibers. Those fibers, if you inhale them, they get in your lungs, they never go away, and it can be a carcinogen. So, you know, as you explained, when we have people that are breaking in there to get the copper out of there, which was a reason why a lot of people were breaking in, others were looking for shelter, if they're walking through that, they're also walking through our community and through our businesses and can bring it home, can bring it to school, and we don't want that, those kind of contamination, that kind of contamination in the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, the steam plant is, a few years ago, I had the opportunity, County Environmental. I believe it was County Environmental.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
I think Councilor Morales was around. There was a couple of us.
Yep.
And it was, uh, it was like a setting for a Stephen King movie.
Yeah.
You need a tetanus shot after you leave.
Yeah.
People don't realize how...
Yeah.
How dangerous that, that area can be.
It can, and by doing this the right way and having people that are qualified to do this work that, you know, have a lot of training, they understand how to get rid of these contaminants, it's just like, gosh, I think we talked for ten minutes just about their process to rinse everything when they're done because, as you can imagine, when you get that insulation and you're taking it off, you do have fibers that get in. You're also power washing, and you have equipment that's covered in lead-based paint. So that, you know, is getting in the, in the environment, too. So there was a long discussion about, you know, how that's going to happen and how that water is going to be treated to get the contaminants out. It's, I mean, I just, we're just so fortunate. And I, these buildings, without this kind of help, we would be looking at them for generations. We would be dealing with this potential contamination in our community for many years. And I'm just thankful that we have such great partners that are willing to help us with this.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at six forty P M. What are the wishes of the council?
I move to, we'll have the city manager go apply for an EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grant.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, it's exciting. Okay. Item number nine is reports by staff and committees, and the first report will be from me for the Public Safety Building Committee meeting that we had last Monday, October twenty-first. Um, yes, everyone has a little sketch that I'll talk about a little bit. So the attendees for the meeting were Counselor Kelly and Deputy Mayor Terrio, Chief Saucier, Jan Murgison, Manager Thompson, Phil McDonough, and myself. We were joined via Zoom by the folks from Artifacts. So the reason for our meeting last week, we had an organizational meeting prior to that, and we talked a little bit about the last concept that they had sent us. And there were some things that we felt we could change, some rooms that could be removed. So we looked all of that over, and we sent them our findings and our requests to change the concept a little bit. They sent us back a new concept that still wasn't quite hitting the mark for us, so we asked them to meet with us, so that was the purpose of this last meeting. So we did explain to them that we still needed to have the jail cells closer to our dispatch area. There were some restrooms that we felt weren't necessary in the building. We wanted to square the building off because there were some bumpouts that were just making the building kind of awkwardly shaped and adding costs to the project. So we asked if they could fix that. We had asked for them to move some of the rooms around in the concept, and they hadn't done that. So we talked a little bit about how we wanted that to look as well. So at the end of the day, they were able to come back to us with a sketch just a couple of days later, and that's the sketch that we, everyone here has in front of them now. That is a hand-drawn sketch, so it's not a new concept yet. They wanted to make sure that this was what we wanted before they moved ahead with a new concept because it is going to cost a little bit for them to come up with a new concept. And so what we were given as a cost for that is two thousand eight hundred dollars, and it'll take them about four weeks to redo this as a new concept design that they'll, you know, digitize and have done up like the others were. So what you can see here in the rendering, I don't think we have a copy that we can put on the screen, but we have flipped this alley port to the other side of the building as opposed to where it was in the old rendering. The cells are now around the dispatch area where we asked for them to be. We've flipped the way the lockers and the showers are on that side of the building to make it a little bit more user-friendly for people going in and out. We have shrunk in the size of some of the rooms where we felt like the rooms were too large for what we really needed, so we were able to shrink down some of the rooms. As I mentioned earlier, we did remove several restrooms from the design, and so I think everybody pretty much from the committee has been really pleased with this new rendering. Are there any questions from the council?
What is the square footage of this building? Did you guys kind of come up with that?
Yes, we do have it somewhere. Penny, do you happen to have it?
I think she said it was approximately the same.
It's, yeah, it didn't really change the square footage.
Well, if we don't, if we don't reduce the square footage significantly, we're not going to make our budget. We've been hovering around eleven, eleven-five to twelve thousand square feet ever since we started. Well, except for the first one, which was like twenty-two thousand square feet. But I think, I firmly believe that we're not going to get the cost savings we need until we reduce the footprint of this building even further. That's just my opinion. I'm concerned about the cost. What's, you said something about this is going to cost us another twenty-eight hundred dollars and four weeks more?
Yes, to redo this because, because we had to move so many things around in the rendering.
Did they, did they say it would bring costs down by squaring things out? I mean, did, just logistically, it should make things easier, I would think, to make us more square building, but would it make costs come down? I would assume, but I, I don't know.
I mean, we'll have to see what they come back with. We need to be able to approve for them to move forward with this final concept.
What do they do to provide the all-in cost estimate for this?
I would say after they can get us back this new rendering.
Yeah.
Are they going to do that at the same time, maybe?
So what we have to do is approve them to do the new rendering at the two thousand eight hundred dollars. And so I would assume in the next month, we would have all of that information.
I, yeah, I object to that. I mean, they, they're under contract to provide us a schematic design, and they've gone through nine iterations now over almost two years to get us a design, and we still haven't got a design that meets our budget, and now they're going to charge us extra?
I believe the design does meet our budget, does it not?
Wasn't it nine?
I think it was like nine.
It's nine, it meets our budget. It's within the budget.
It did not, though, because it did not, it did not include, it did not include the other costs, the other city costs. I'm talking about the all-in. And I've been watching that carefully, and it's interesting because through the sequence of different designs, they were getting very close with the nine point five, and they were maintaining ten percent contingency reserve. And then they, and then they went up, and then they went kind of back down again, right? And that was the last, the last number that I saw was around nine, nine point five, but it didn't have... And the other thing they did is they reduced the contingency to five percent, which is really, really, that's, that's... which is really, really, that's risky. I mean, it should be around 15%. That's what they've used in the past. And some of the, some of the previous cost estimates they've given us, they've used 10%. And so we are, you know, we are very, very right on the edge on this budget. And then now they're reducing our contingency to try to make that budget. That puts us at, you know, really, really high risk. And we haven't got bids yet. We don't know how we're going to be surprised. We were surprised with the school, right? What was it, six, eight million dollars more than what we had estimated?
And we also have a $2.5 million buffer too.
That's not a buffer though, that comes right off the top.
That's part of our budget.
The bottom line is, the point is, I think we're going to need to reduce this footprint significantly more to make our budget. But let's, let's wait and see, you know, let's see what the cost estimate comes in. But I do object to paying them any extra. They, you know, this is, they have violated almost every part of this contract. And I don't, I don't believe that we ought to be paying them a penny more to give us a schematic design that they owed us four weeks after the contract was signed. Six weeks, sorry.
Committee member Murchison, would you like to interject?
Hi, Jan Murchison, Caribou Citizen. Volunteer, sure, there. The reason they're asking for the extra money is they were further along in the design when we asked them to make this change. They were working with the previous design from, I want to say, our August meeting.
August.
And, and that was the process of getting the committee back together again and reiterating. And plus we have a new police chief and he's had a chance to look at everything. Is that right? Yes. And they were further along in their design, which is why they're like, okay, we have to step back now, redo a bunch of work. I was very pleased with the amount of money they were asking for. I thought it would be considerably higher. So that's just my two cents.
Well, that's exactly why we need to manage this project. According to how the contract is written, you have gates built in there that we do not allow them to go into development design phase until we're satisfied with their schematic design. And we spent the last almost, you know, two years trying to get to that schematic design and we're still not there.
They understood from our August meeting that, they understood that we were at that point, which is why they can move forward. And we didn't realize they were moving forward. So that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
I do believe with this next phase, we will be asking them for an agreement amendment for this $2,800, but we want an updated schedule. And I want a detailed schedule, not, we're going to be ready in June or January.
I've been asking for a schedule for the last two years.
Yeah, well.
And they've never provided one.
We're going to put our foot down.
And we've put our foot down at the last meeting. So I think that everyone's on the same page, but we do need to move it forward. So if they were under the assumption that we had authorized them to move into that design phase at the August meeting, I think in good faith, we will need to just make sure that we pay that and let them move forward with this new concept so that we can move forward with the project.
Did we take a vote on that? I don't, I don't believe the council made any guidance to them during that August meeting.
I believe they were under the impression that they were to move forward.
And this very well, and I'm sorry for interrupting here, but this could have to do with the fact that we kind of disbanded, disbarred that committee and they didn't know who was in charge. So this, this may be our own ramifications for what we did. But I kind of am in agreement because of the chaos of some of those things that happened, that maybe there was a little bit of confusion. There could have been confusion in there, not knowing who was in charge and what was going on. So maybe just going ahead and giving a pass on this one, even though they may have had a few. But with the understanding that the committee is going to make sure that their foot is firmly set with this next rendering. And we can move forward strongly.
Yes.
Yeah, along that line, I guess we can move forward with this. But is this four weeks? Is this just, oh, we can get that to you in four weeks? Are we saying we need in four weeks?
No, no, they know it's four weeks.
It's four weeks.
It's four weeks. Once we authorize them to, that we're going to pay the $2,800, they will move, they will create the concept map for us.
In the timeframe.
So if we vote on it right now, tomorrow they get an email and it says, please move forward with that. And then they'll have it to us in four weeks.
That's not what they mean. The four weeks is talking about additional four weeks on their overall schedule.
I thought it was on the concept.
I don't believe so. I believe it's on their overall schedule.
That's what I understood.
Okay, I'd have to go back and read the email.
Okay.
I'll have it in front of me.
I was thinking that they were going to have it in four weeks.
Yeah, that's what I understood from that, that we can go back and...
Regardless, let's ask for clarification. I mean, we're that close. Hopefully we can just get clarification.
Yes.
Also, I believe that the longer we sit here and discuss this, the longer it's going to take. And we need to get this out to bid so that we know where we stand. And I just think that we need to move on and get this in, hopefully in four weeks, so that we have a design that we can read on. And then get it to the, get the bids out so that we can move forward with this. Because it's not going to get any better.
No, no.
Can you give them a deadline? You have until November 29th. We're giving you authorization. Your deadline is November 29th. I want this back by November 29th.
We said four weeks. So whatever four weeks is of, as of tomorrow, done.
Yep, that's what I would do.
So what are the wishes of the council?
My wish is to give them until November 29th to get this back.
I need a motion. I need a motion.
Ah, where's my... Yeah, I make a motion to approve the $2,800 and new four-week schedule for Artifacts to create the new rendering. Is that good enough?
I second it. Perfect. Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion?
I think it's just stunning, oh, what's going on here? You know, we've gone this far down the road. We've been through nine design iterations and they failed. They, they're unwilling or unable to give us a design that meets our budget through a lot of input over many, many months. And now at the end of the game, they want to charge us extra. I just, I can't see that. I wanted to share something else too with the, with the council as part of this discussion. I, I went and looked, we were talking about the size. And I'm convinced that the size of this police station, the scale of it, is really too big for our little town of Caribou. I gathered some statistics from different police stations around the state of Maine. We're at 11,000 square feet, 11.6 or whatever like that. We're about on par with Waterville and Gorham and Falmouth. Each of those towns or cities are like twice or three times the population of Caribou. Why are we building a police station that is the size for a community three times our size? I think we really have to step back and assess, do we really want to build a building this big? Can we afford to? I, I'm not convinced that this building can be built within our budget. I think we need to reduce the size further. So I do not support moving forward with Artifacts any further on this at all.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Any further discussion? Bagley?
No.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So Manager Thompson, if you could just email Ellen tomorrow and we'll get the ball rolling.
So the, well, I'm not to belabor this anymore. So after, we set a firm deadline. So then if this doesn't come through on the 29th, then we're going to be at another. We'll proceed differently.
Yeah, we'll have to see where we're at then.
And we don't know what the cost estimate is going to be until they do the work.
It's like waiting to see what you're going to get on your birthday when you open the package.
I'm really worried. I want to move forward with this. I just, I don't think we're going to make it with this firm.
We'll find out when we get the next rendering. Okay. Item number nine B is the September financial report. And we have our finance director here this evening.
Evening, Mayor, Counselor, and Manager. The financial notes start on page 40. I'll be presenting on page 41. Assets for the end of September were $18,310,757.76. Cash on hand was $10,463,039.8. Tax receivables towards the bottom of the page. We brought in $5,424,326.37 just in the month of September, bringing our total commitment down to $1,681,908.83. We're at 82% collected to last year, 77.7. So we're up 4.3% over last year in our collection for total commitment, which is awesome. Kudos to Danielle and her staff. Busy month of September. The next line, the 2025 tax receivables. We collected $13,396.4 in prepayments. We're at a total of $28,126.73. The next page, at the bottom of the page, we have the total liabilities for the month. Moving over to page 46, the fund balance ending for September 30th Moving over to page 48, our expenses for the month for September. We came in at $671,671.51. And we are currently under budget. We're at 69.2% of our budget, which is 5.8% less than our budget through the end of September. Mainly, the police station was understaffed for about six months of the year. I believe we're fully staffed now. We may be one short, but I think he has plans on filling that last position. Moving over to page 53, our revenues for the month came in at $679,914.58. And we are at 87.1% of our budget, which is 12.1% above budget through the first three quarters of the month. Our excise for the month came in at $165,555.92. Year-to-date, we're at $1,335,924.87. And that's 10.1% above our budget figure for the first three quarters of the year. Revenue sharing for the month of September came in at $220,403.38. Year-to-date, we're at $1,735,44.79. And again, that's 10.1% above our budget figure or about $205,000. Moving over to page 58, we have our investment report for the third quarter. When we talked, we had our investment committee meeting, I think it was in the month of September. Might have been the end of August. But we talked about renewing our CDs and actually getting a couple of new ones. And I went ahead and renewed those three CDs through North Stye, the County Federal Credit Union, and TE Bank. And we also did a new CD with Acadia and Cataden. And we talked about staggering those. And so the first one is for four months, four years, two years, one year, four years and one year. And the rates are there. So again, the rates came in a little bit lower, but with the feds cutting the interest rate. I still think they're very good rates. Over 3% is, is what we're getting on our checking now. So if we can lock in above 3%, we're doing, we're doing good, I believe. Also renewed the Hamilton Library Trust and the Dorothy Cooper Scholarship for a year. And those, actually the Hamilton was for, for three years at 3.85. And the Dorothy Cooper was one year at 5%. The next page is our revenue graph for the month, for the calendar year of 2024. And as you can see, we're over budget by the 12.1%. That's my report. Anyone had any questions?
Do you anticipate that trend will continue to the end of the year?
I would say probably, I look in between 7% and 9% over budget. Is what I'm anticipating. So we'll drop a little bit as far as percentage.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Move to September financial.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Thank you, Carl.
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay, item number nine C is our city manager's report. And that is on page 60 of your packet.
So tonight, I don't have my usual format for our manager's report. Some of the things, I just couldn't really fit into our little graph. So general government remains short-staffed. I appreciate everyone's patience and I appreciate that employees are pitching in to help with administrative, code enforcement, tax assessment, and economic development tasks. So broadband consolidated, Fidiam buildout is ongoing. They hope to be finished in Caribou by Thanksgiving. This is not the last mile project. They are laying fiber into their ARDOF areas that they successfully bid on. So ARDOF is the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. And like three years ago, the government put these out for bid. Different companies bid on them to bring broadband out there. So theirs is not going to go by everyone. So if anyone has a question about if Fidiam is going to go by their house, reach out to me and I can give you the contact information for the person who would have those answers. Charter Spectrum, they have, so they applied for poll permits in batches. And they have received a batch of poll permits. So they have started working. This is the last mile project. They received funding through the Maine Connectivity Authority. I don't have information on the exact locations. Also with the broadband, Governor Mills has announced that residents not served are eligible for Starlink units. And more information is available online about that. And again, if someone has questions, they can reach out and I can at least send them what I have on the Starlink thing, which was just last week.
Is that information on the website too? That way people might be able to just go on and find that information.
We don't have a broadband tab. And I, I don't really know where to put it, to be honest with you.
Maybe if you could just find a place right on that homepage, just to say if you have questions about the Fidiam buildout, contact this person. That might just cut down on calls.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It's just one of those moving targets.
You know, it's interesting, we, well, you probably remember during, when we had the broadband committee, that Starlink was kind of this concept that we talked about. But it was, it was way out there. It was like, this was, this would never happen or whatever. And it'd be too expensive. And it was just one of those, those things that we thought, well, let's just put it on a list of options. And here it is happening.
That's right.
Amazing.
It is amazing.
I don't know, I don't know how I feel about that.
Yeah.
Really, honestly. It's a good thing, but I want Starlink.
Yeah, I don't know. But I mean, we have Spectrum on our road. I mean, I've had it since 93, so it's been like where you live at least that long.
We have no problems with Spectrum, but still.
And we have no problems.
With the bill.
Except the bill.
Yeah.
That's it.
True.
Exactly. So yes, when we had the broadband committee going, like, we, we did discuss that as an option because our, the result we were looking for was that all of our citizens had some kind of a broadband product. And I can remember Counselor Willie talking, you know, well, you know, how much would it be to just get everyone a Starlink? Well, I guess Governor Mills asked that question too. Because that's, that's, you know, one of the things that the state's...
The idea was born in Caribou.
Yes, it was born here, yeah. Riverfront Power Plants, as I spoke during the Brownfields Grant public hearing, the Circula action at the steam plant is ongoing and they are going to finish before Thanksgiving. Now, this is a change in schedule. They had thought they would have to demobilize when the weather got cold and they couldn't use water any longer. We've had a very nice fall and they're going to finish. So when they demobilize, they're done. That is a good thing because that means that step one of phase one will be done as part of this project. As part of this process, the EPA will have an after-action report that will include a final fact sheet and a plan for the next phase of removal and deconstruction. We will have a rough order of magnitude and an estimated cost of this removal and deconstruction for our Brownfields cleanup grant application. The next step in the diesel plant project is after demobilization, there will be some hazcatting of various containers of petroleum products in there to just confirm what they are and how they can be disposed. We have been held up on our diesel plant project because of the Circla action. So we can't have, EPA can't have two things going on at the same time there. So we have to wait until they're demobilized to work on the diesel plant. But we'll be going out for bid on that soon, since we know they're going to be done after Thanksgiving. So as we discussed before, we will have another public hearing on October 31st here at 3:00 p.m. And that will be if anyone has any questions or comments after we get the order of magnitude and the cost for removal and deconstruction. Events and marketing, the city has a committee working on Small Business Saturday in the Christmas season. Our superintendent parks and rec spoke of that, and our fire chief is also going to speak a little bit about that, too, because the Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department are also an important part of that. Peter isn't here. They have things going on at the library, too, again this year. Look for schedules. We'll have them out soon. So you can join the fun by participating in the decorating contest, or you can be a seasonal vendor in our downtown Christmas market. More information is available at christmasincaribou.com or cariboumain.org/Christmas. The Caribou Public Library and Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department will have various activities. So please plan to shop local and in Caribou this holiday season. Economic Development, the Caribou Development Committee had a brainstorming session with other city committees on October 8th to gather thoughts on Riverfront and Bird's Eye redevelopment. The city manager attended economic development training and graduated from the University of Oklahoma Economic Development Institute earlier this month. And this is great training that can be applied to our efforts in Caribou. Grants Administration, just a reminder, the updates are posted on cariboumain.org/grants page. Staff tries to update that monthly. The DOT VPI will have a second public meeting in December to review the findings of TY Lin and Razor. The MBR, and just by the way, I just found out that...
To do primarily transfers. And with the reduction in transfers that we're doing now, the unit does not fit our needs anymore. And simply because it's such a large unit that we can't use it locally for emergency 911 calls, because it's very difficult to get in our narrow driveways that we have in the area that we serve. Also, the unit, when it was designed, the wheelbase, the front wheelbase compared to the rear wheelbase, it makes it very difficult driving down our Arusta County roads. Makes it difficult driving our Arusta County roads that has all the grues from the tractor-trailer trucks. And it makes it very dangerous driving that unit, in my opinion. And that has been voiced by a lot of our members of the department also. Unit has almost 145,000 miles on it. I've been talking with Kyle Daigle from Autotronics, which supplies all our ambulances that we've done in the past. We don't usually go out for bid because Autotronics has always treated us very well, and we've been in business with them ever since we started carrying ambulances through the department. So he has a unit right now in the lot that was purchased for another department. The pricing on that was given to that department. The department had another catastrophic event happen to one of their units, and we're unable to purchase it. So right now, he's offering it as the reduced rate that was given to that department. So if you noticed on the bill from Autotronics, that unit is for $391,000. You're taking $51,000 off because of the pricing that was given to the other department. He's honoring that for us. Um, eight hundred dollar discount from Ford. And then because we're a repeat customer, we'll get another twenty five hundred dollar discount there. And then we'd be trading in our two thousand freight liner, uh, two thousand seventeen freight liner, uh, for thirty eight thousand dollars. We would be adding a, uh, Stryker power load system, which will add thirty thousand dollars. And that would bring our total to three hundred and twenty eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, in the ambulance reserve, I had seen that there was a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty, four dollars and sixty seven cents available. Um, city manager also advised me that there was seventy five thousand dollars from a two thousand twenty two CIP loan. That would also be transferred into that account, uh, which would bring us up to a hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and fifty four dollars and sixty seven cents. Uh, with the purchase price of the three hundred and twenty eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, uh, that would give us a shortfall of a hundred and fifty one thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars and thirty three cents. Um, something to note, if the council does not move on this tonight, uh, there is a price increase that will occur on November first. Uh, on the Stryker power load, which would increase the price by another four thousand dollars. And we would also lose the fifty one thousand dollar discounted rate, uh, for the price of the vehicle. Uh, currently, we are, with the trade in and everything, we're taking ninety two thousand, three hundred dollars off that amount, total amount. Um, and. If the question will probably arise about remounting, uh, the current ambulance that we have, and we can't because of the size of the box. It was a specially designed vehicle for that freight liner chassis. Uh, so we're unable to remount that, so that's why we're trading it in, so. Uh, the last unit we replaced, it was in two thousand twenty one, which is our frontline ambulance right now. Uh, it's come to the point where we have to start looking at, uh, at, uh, replacing some of our vehicles, so.
What's a typical lifespan on ambulance units?
Typically, we like to try to get at least ten years.
Ten years, that's what I would have guessed.
Yeah, and just, you know, the, the weather plays a big role on those units up here. And, you know, just the, the salt and everything that's applied to the roads really corrodes them up. And obviously, I mean, it's a, it's an ambulance, so we have to be as safe as we can with that, so.
Well, I, I see that it's a twenty seventeen, so it's still got a few years left, um, of life left to it before it needs to be recapitalized. You know, so you're proposing that we take a good deal, let's here today and do it early.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why are we not doing long distance transfers anymore? I mean, we bought that for a reason.
I have a question also.
For long term reason, uh, I mean, for, uh, long term transfers. We bought that specifically for that purpose. And now all of a sudden, we're not doing them anymore.
Yeah, I have that question also.
We're not doing the capacity that we used to do. Uh, it's staffing issues.
I have a question about that, though, because aren't we back up to pretty close to being fully staffed? So I'm not sure why that still holds true.
Because our nine one one calls are up. Um, if you look back, I'll just give you a couple of examples. Um, nine one one calls in, I'll just start in, so in May of this year. Uh, we were at two hundred and forty six nine one one calls, which was seventy two calls more than two thousand twenty three. And then you go to June, we're at two hundred and thirty two calls, which was forty four calls more than the previous year. Um, July of this year, we're up two hundred and thirty three calls, which was twenty nine calls more than two thousand twenty three. August, we're at two hundred and sixty two calls, which was forty three calls more than two thousand twenty three. And then September, we're at two hundred and seventy six calls, which was fifty five calls more than two thousand twenty three. Our nine one one calls have shot through the roof. And we struggle every day to cover our station. We have a four man minimum. And if you listen to any of our radio traffic at all, um, all day, every day is, the words is Caribou, any available driver. And that's people that are not available on the board. Um, and that's become a real problem everywheres.
Um, how many of these calls originate from the other towns that we are servicing? Because that may be an issue that we may have to cut back or whatever. Because I think we need to take care of Caribou. And if, if this is happening where you can't do the, do any transports or your, your nine one one calls are up so high that you can hardly handle those, I think we need to, to look at, at, you know, this. Another thing that I wanted to know about that is, are we getting paid properly? Are we getting paid on time from the, from the, uh, communities that we do service? Um, is there, are we losing money from them? Should we be raising their, their, um, prices, the prices that we charge them and things like? I think this has got to look, be looked at pretty hard because it sounds like you're, you're not able to, you know, you're, pretty soon, you're gonna be. So you're not gonna be able to handle all the calls, you know, that comes. And I think we need to look at, at cutting that maybe or something like that.
Did you have something you wanted to say as well?
Oh, yeah.
I thought I saw a hand, but maybe not.
Okay, okay, nope.
Uh, as far as breaking down the communities, I, I would, that would be something I'd have to go back and, you know.
Right. We have it.
And do for you.
We have it.
It. It's not just our community. I, I talked to a lot of fire chiefs throughout the state and everybody's struggling just like we do. Um, it's just, for some reason, ever since COVID.
Drugs.
Well, it's, it's everything, yeah, yeah. Um, you know, we have a bigger geriatric patients, you know, in this community also. So that's, that's keeping us busy and then, uh, but normally, you know, our May to June, July, August calls would always kind of go down because of the summer months, you know, and, but this year it's, it's, we're tapped, we're, you know, we're always above those two hundred easily, easily, so.
Well, I appreciate your initiative in trying, you know, find a deal that we can take now. I'm, I'm wondering about, maybe the manager can answer this. Isn't there a, a policy or something in our charter that requires us to put out to bid certain things that are over a certain amount of dollar value? I honestly can't remember.
I don't either.
You don't think so, or?
I don't know. I, I.
We should look, we should look into that because that, that kind of bothers me that we're just gonna go direct to, I mean, even though these are trusted vendors, they do. I mean, just to be fair, we should be putting these large purchases out to bid, I believe. Even, even if it's not in our charter or our policy, it should be because that's a lot of money.
Yeah, so nor- normally, we always go with a Braun box and chassis. Um, but I've opted out of that this year because it's just, I mean, it's astronomical. I mean, their, their prices are really, really high. Um, the Demir's is, is the step down, but you're looking at a Braun, you know, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for, for one of those units. The Braun boxes are really good because they're basically last a long, long time. You can remount those like two or three times, but unfortunately, because of this unit here, we, we can't remount this one because just the, the soup, because it's a super, super Braun, they call it, so.
What did we pay for that, that unit, do you know?
I would have.
We have right now?
I would have to go back and look, but I would dare say.
Sure, about three hundred.
I, I was gonna say around two forty five, something like that.
Because I have a real hard time with taking a three hundred thousand dollar hit in seven years. But, you know, I would be much more apt to say, if we were going to, and I'm not saying we are, but if we were going to, I'd say, keep this one and make that a, a revenue source and start doing transfers again and buy the other one that you're gonna need eventually anyway. But that would be just, um, my opinion because thirty eight thousand dollars is nothing on a trade in for a three hundred thousand dollar value item. Of course, you're gonna depreciate something, you know what I'm saying?
Not that much.
No, not that much.
I was gonna say the same thing. And I think it would be nice to see the department building that revenue back up again by doing those transports, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would not want to see that, that piece of equipment that we spent that much money be traded off, um, for such a small amount of a trade in.
I'll just make a comment on, on it real quick. Um, the unit, when it was built, the concept was there, but once we got it to the department and started using it, because of the, the way our northern Maine roads are, the interstate, the grooves in the road, this unit travels all over the place. I've personally driven that unit many times myself when I was, before I became chief, and it's.
It must have wide tires on.
The, the front and the rear don't match, so once you get into those grooves, the, the, this is what, this is what that ambulance wants to do. And you don't want something like that when you have a patient on board and, you know, a nurse.
Something that could be sold privately then for, for a larger amount of money, that would be my.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't like the short period of time that they've given us to make this decision on buying this.
Yeah.
And you know that I'm an advocate of a van. And I've been for a long time.
I do know that. I've heard that once or twice.
And I still think that if we've got to replace something, this should be something that we look into. It's, we could probably, we've probably got enough money to pay for it. Um, there, you don't do the far, the transports like you used to. A van would work if you've got to take somebody from Caribou to Prescott. Certainly, you don't need the big ambulances when you come down and change somebody's, um, fire, um, smoke detector that I've seen happen. Um, there's trans, there's, um, no transports several times where you have to go, I've been there, pick you up off the floor, stuff like that. Um, I think that it's worth a try for one ambulance. I know your, I've read your letters, I've, your emails and stuff, and, uh, you say, well, you don't have the life support systems that you do in the bigger ones. But not every call that you get is life support. I mean, it's minor. I, I, I heard one on the scanner years ago that he, he had a, he had a broken toe. I mean, and he needed an ambulance to go, you know, and stuff like that. So I think we need to look at the ambulance, the vans, at least one van to supplement this, this fleet that we have. If you're gonna replace that, that big one and give it a try. I've seen, I, I know they're not real comfortable, but I'm not talking about going from here to, to Portland or whatever, you know.
And in the meantime, maybe work on building the revenue up from the transports again.
Right, yeah.
I'm just gonna tell you, I'm glad you brought it up because I have the same feelings.
I, I agree, I do too.
I knew you were gonna bring up the van.
This is something that we've talked about for a while.
When this was purchased in two thousand seventeen or nineteen, excuse me, the year, we were, we bought a different ambulance specific because we were gonna do all these transfers rather than another ambulance. And now we're saying, well, we're not doing that anymore. Things changed, but it was a specific purchase at that time.
Yeah.
And it was more money. It was a bigger, bigger ambulance and there was some concern at the time that we have room to put it in the, you know, fit it in the, in the department. So that's just, and I, I'll agree with the van because I've been an advocate of that as well, so. So I have to say on this.
So if I can just comment on the van ambulance real quick.
I mean.
They do have their place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in our city, um, I strongly feel they don't because we, we don't have necessarily a BLS crew that just drives around and doing transfers. Uh, we could go do a lift assist and it's a no transport. But once that lift assist is done, we can get called to an emergency call where we need cardiac life support. We don't have time to come back to the station and grab the correct ambulance per se to go to that call. So we have to be ready at all times to go. The thing about van ambulances, they don't have the store, the outside storage capability that we do now. Um, we also respond to fires with our ambulances, which have air packs in them. We can't do that with a van ambulance. Uh, van ambulance is primarily one provider out back, believe it or not. Uh, if we have a cardiac arrest or a major trauma or something that requires three or four personnel to be working on that patient, there is no room in the van ambulance to do that. Absolutely no room. Um, so that's why Caribou has always been a big advocate on having, you know, the box style ambulances.
But you've got four other ambulances.
Yeah.
But we have one.
And a full staff.
But we have one crew, if they're out, if they're out with the van, they have to respond, so.
And, I mean, they may have to, they may not have to. You don't know what's gonna happen down the road. You could have a huge accident and have all of them out and still not have enough. Thing is, I, I, I think that we need to, to save some money somewhere. And I don't think that one, and, and if I'm wrong, then down the road, replace it. But I, I think it would work just as well for, for lift assist, uh, changing the, the, uh, smoke detectors, um, going there and checking somebody and they're not, they, there's no transport or whatever. I think it would save a lot of money, certainly for the initial cost of them. I saw one, one community that had five of them lined right up in the same community. So they, you know, and they probably were basic, but still, I think that, uh, that we could get by with one and save the money and build the coffers up for next time. Cause how are you, how are you gonna, I guess I should ask you, if you, if you wanted to buy this one from Autotronics, how are you gonna pay for the rest of it? There's no money there.
Well, I mean, we, we are one of the departments that creates revenue, and I mean, that's by the contracts to the outside communities and stuff. So I was hoping to take some of that money from there and, and pay.
So would one way the other, I guess, is what I, I need to know is that, I'm not trying to give you a hard time here. I'm just trying to come up with some little solutions. But the way, the way, having that many communities to try to, uh, generate some revenue against, um, having to pay it out for something else that maybe you wouldn't need, um, and look at it that way. I mean, I think one is canceling out another perhaps. So it, I think all these things need to be looked at before we decide on a lot of things. And I, and I think it's too bad, but I don't think that we should make a quick, a quick decision. I don't think it's right that they've given us that short term.
And the, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I've been talking with Autotronics and this unit just come available.
Right.
And right off, you know, the initial saving of fifty one thousand dollars.
Got to ask.
You know, um, so I'm just gonna put this out here. Um, our ambulance twenty three is a two thousand thirteen. That is starting to nickel and dime us. It's well over ten years old, so that's gonna be the next one, uh, up for replacement, so.
How much are we putting per year into the capital fund for replacing ambulances?
Well, all my reserve accounts were taken away years ago, so what we have.
We have no, we have nothing going into our capital, uh, budget every year for recapitalization.
I don't think that those have been taken away.
Or like, no.
In twenty two, it was seventy five, I think twenty three and twenty four have been like fifty.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
So how much is sitting in the capital account?
Um, he told you.
Yeah, he did.
Oh, that's the, that's the one oh two that you mentioned, that is a reserve?
One oh two, four fifty four, sixty seven cents.
So that's, that's the capital fund.
Yeah, and then there's seventy five thousand that's still sitting in a different account from two thousand twenty two that belongs in that account.
Should we consider maybe putting more into that? I mean, we, we will never have enough money by the time he needs more equipment to, to pay for it. If we've only got a hundred K in there now. You've got one ambulance coming due to.
We have a ladder truck that's two thousand, up for two thousand twenty seven. You're looking at one point.
I, I don't know, I just, I, I throw that out there for something to consider in the future.
I think it's important to have a reserve in a capital account, in the capital.
Absolutely. And we're putting in how much per year typically? You said fifty, seventy five.
Well, for, for the ambulance, I think, and then, um, it's depending on the needs. Like, there's so much like foam, so much for, um, fire hose. There's been money put away for stretchers, monitors, you know, it's a lot of different things. Um, I think this year was like one eighty, was that about what it was? I think the last two years was around a hundred and eighty thousand, like all in.
Well, I know that's been an issue in the past, past councils have just, you know. Well, I know that's been an issue in the past, past councils have just, you know, ripped the capital budgets. I think that's a mistake. I mean, we really need to fund those capital, capital accounts, you know, religiously, I mean, and adequately, because we will go over the cliff eventually, if we don't have those capital funds charged up. We're not going to have the money to pay for the things that we need.
Right, I mean, we had the stretchers this year, which was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Luckily, city manager was able to get us a grant to pay for those, so that was the savings right there. So, if we're, in my eyes, if we're looking at spending that for stretchers, maybe we should be trying to put that towards a new ambulance, you know. This unit also is four-wheel drive, which, you know, the state doesn't plow in the middle of the night like they used to. So, we're, you know, when somebody calls, we need to go. So, we're lucky enough with the ambulances we have right now, which the box style, they're a little heavier unit, but we're finding, over the years, that we've even had some of our volunteer firefighters with plow trucks come plow for us so we can get out of driveways. We've had to be towed out of driveways before. That's not the thing you want to be dealing with when somebody's in, having cardiac issues. It's kind of a helpless feeling, for sure, but.
Seems to me with the increase in calls he's talked about, I don't think now's the time to be thinking about cutting public safety.
I just wanted to bring up the, about the capital improvement at the time. There was, there's been money going into these different accounts every year. A smaller amount went in a couple of years ago, based on the fact of the price the council was looking for. It's purchasing a van ambulance, which was like a hundred, just some brief numbers here, it was less than half of the price. So, we were, that's why less money was put into that.
They were being charged with funding with the assumption that it would be a van and not an ambulance?
We had enough in there for a van ambulance, so I can attest, I was on the capital improvement committee at the time. Not against removing anything or not planning for the future, but that was, you said, well, okay, this is the price of this. It's not three hundred grand, it's a hundred and thirty or forty.
Yeah, it was right around, it was under a hundred fifty.
We just said, okay, let's put this much in there, it'll be enough to purchase.
So, that's the answer, that's, that's what the council is, is saying that we want to see happen.
Well, at that time.
At that time.
But I still would be willing to say that's what the council, a lot of the council would like to see happen now as well.
That was a reason to answer your capital improvement.
Price on the van ambulance last week was a hundred ninety thousand, so. That's how much.
Gone up after a couple of years, so.
Well, I think this certainly requires a little bit more thought and discussion and exploration before we can, before I'm comfortable on purchasing this.
So, I do see on the last page that it's first come, first served. Price is valid until October thirty-first.
Well, that's fine, I think we had put it out for bid anyway. That's what I'd like to see happen. If we're going to buy an ambulance, something for four hundred thousand dollars, we're going to put it out to bid.
Anybody else from the council have any other comments? Okay, all right, well, we will have to continue looking into this, but I don't think at this time we're prepared to, to move forward with this purchase.
So, I do think at some point, we really need to have a serious discussion about reserve accounts.
Yes, yep, absolutely.
Because, so, way after I'm long gone as chief, you've got three fire trucks, each a year apart, that are going to have to be replaced. And those are big price tags, so. It's quite obvious we need to start preparing for that now, instead of later. And that goes for, I mean, citywide, really, I mean, you know, if you look at, you know, you've got the highway department, you've got the PD, you've got fire department, the rec department, you know, we're all in big use of vehicles, so those reserve accounts are really important, and really need to be brought back, so.
Well, and I'll add, I'll add to that, you know, on our side, when we do our capital planning, that's why it's important to have a five-year plan, like, that is laid out in our charter, that's what we're supposed to do. This is the reason why we're supposed to do it that way, so that we can map out those requirements and have them, have the money in the account by the time you need something, right? And so, what we've been doing every year is just picking and choosing what we're going to put in that account, without really the context of where it all fits in and how it flows. And so, I think this year, I think we're going to try harder to get to a point where we have a real capital budget with the five-year, the history and the five-year projections, so that we can get the full picture of what we need. Otherwise, we're going to continually stumble upon these types of things, where we don't have the money, and we have a need.
Or you have to borrow it, or you do it all at once.
And lucky for us, it's almost budget time again.
Yeah.
So, we'll start it all again, I know.
It's a tough, it's a tough time.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We'll talk about all these things, so. All right, item number eleven is reports and discussion by mayor and council members. I will start down at this end of the table this evening.
I don't have anything to report at this time, anything about the library Penny had brought up, so I don't have anything to report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Snack?
Just, just, somebody remind you, you nailed both the thirty-first or a tax for the telehearing?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I meant to say that earlier, and a quick question on our tax-acquired properties and the automatic lien foreclosure. Usually, that comes to us, we're not going to be meeting until the end of November. Typically, we look those over and decide. Last year, we waived foreclosure on all of them. Are we going to, is that going to automatically go in place before the next meeting?
At the next meeting is when you need to waive foreclosure.
Okay, so we, we'll do that at the next.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda.
That's my question, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss.
Yeah, and I don't know how many they have on the list right now, but I mean, they have another month, so.
Okay, I was unsure of the time, I know it's in November, so that's, that's not a discussion, it's just a question, I guess, that's all I have.
Councilor Lovell?
I guess I just want to say for all the kids to have a safe Halloween, it's going to be a nice, warm day. And then we should put the Christmas lights up right after that. And I'm really excited about all the fun things that are going to be happening for Christmas with the Christmas committee and all the things we're doing. So, look forward to that.
I am on that committee. That's my favorite committee, what are we talking about? Yes, yes, all of it, all of it. Is Councilor Bagley?
I heard there's an election coming up, go vote, November fifth.
Already did.
All right, thank you, everybody. Our next regular meeting is November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. We do have an executive session on the agenda this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to, go into executive session. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, we have right there, pursuant to one. Right, it's all right there.
Move to go into executive session for union negotiations pursuant to one MRSA four oh five point six D Fire Department Union.
I second it. Moved and seconded further discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, I would like to thank everybody for joining us this evening, and the regular session is adjourned.
Did you have any questions for Chief LaJoy before he leaves on the?